And the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 11, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes of the closed session of the February 11, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved. Second.
Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You did them all at once.
Yes. Okay, moving on to public comment. We've got a couple of public comments. Just a reminder, we've got our cards presented at the sign-in table. Please state your name before making your comment. Limit comments to five minutes and that's it.
I see a piece of paper. I didn't see any cards.
Does it look like this roughly?
It's time, yeah, not interactive.
You've got a couple of minutes. Okay, first up, Keith.
I'm Keith Nega. I'm a taxpayer in a graduate of Westmont High School. I'm here tonight to recap the process. I've attended over 12 school board meetings, public committee meetings, and countless hours of Internet searches. The phrase the Board has consistently said is "trust us, we will be transparent, and we are financially responsible." The fact you keep saying it makes it if you believe it to be true. From the start with the pool, you said we will do what the people want to do. I believe you knowing the whole time that the Hinsdale Swim Club was going to donate $50,000 to repair the pool for standard operations. Funny thing is, in the pamphlets you sent out, you say you have concerns about possible problems at Manning. So if it's a concern, would it mean that you had the proper maintenance program in place? They would have been addressed in a properly manner. The money you spent on the referendum is ridiculous. I mean, I'm just going to go with one point here. You paid somebody $85,000 for a consultant who told us not to put it on in November ballot. So you paid for professional opinion and then you ignored it. Money well spent. People feel there is trust with Anthony, the financial manager of the town, to truly explain the money issues as well as the breakdown about the $600,000 of COVID money and how all that was spent. I'd like to speak to the outside influences about this referendum. We hired a contractor. He donated $10,000 to the yes people. The yes people were then able to pay a consultant with all the knowledge to push this referendum along to build a new, unneeded school. On a struggling, hard-working, blue-collar community, they are not part of our community. They are here to make money off of us. Manning is a fixable school. Look at what they did with South School. Yes it will cost, but a brick building is not going anywhere. You can look at Hinsdale, Downers, LT, any school in the city. They're just as old, if not older. I'm sure that Manning has yearly inspections by local, state, police, fire, to make sure it is up to standards. I think the fact that we have multiple CUSD employees working for outside companies in the education field is disheartening also. Working here is a full-time job. Do we know that their second job is not taken away from 100% commitment to our kids and our students during school hours? You speak about the awards that the schools win, okay? But if you look at the proficiency, if I'm wrong, correct me, the numbers I'm seeing are maybe 30%, 40% proficiency. You're giving eighth-grade kids ACT tests. Why? Then at the one meeting, I believe you said the kids were taking five or six practice ACT tests in high school, okay? But you're teaching the test. They were adamant about not teaching the test. In closing, I think people should know for sure we have secured the property you speak of. Not just rumors, we should be able to get a letter of intent along with the cost of the property be done by now, since we've been going at this since before November. I think the only accomplishments so far of this referendum were you were able to divide and anger this whole community. And I'm not alone on that. We trusted you and think it could have been better. The anger that's out there between the yes and the no, it's not. It's never gotten to that point and it's there. I have people at Mays Lake that are afraid to speak their mind. I have mothers and kids that are afraid to say something because they don't want to be, you know, whatever. Either way, mainly more with the yes, but I'm not just saying. So that's all I have to say this evening and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Keshav and Samyuktha?
Close enough.
Close enough, okay.
Tell us how it's pronounced.
Yeah.
My name is Samyuktha.
Samyuktha.
My name is Keshav.
Keshav.
Thank you.
Keshav's a good saxophone player.
Hi, my name is Samyuktha Viswanath and we are both sophomores at Westmont High School and we are here to talk to you guys about STEM Night. STEM Night is an annual event in Westmont where students and their families come together to participate in hands-on activities related to science, technology, engineering, and math. STEM Night started as a way to bring the community together after the pandemic. It has grown from a high school event to a district-wide program that encourages students of all ages to come with their family to learn about different aspects of STEM such as robotics and virtual reality with hands-on activities like engineering programs and circuits. This program aims to foster the creativity and curiosity of young students and explore new horizons in STEM.
This event, which started three years ago, has evolved and had great success over the years, from 200 people in its debut to over 500 people in 2024. Hosted by the Westmont High School students and the media center, the event has over 24 stations, including 3D printing, cublets, STEM trivia, and building drivable toy cars, among other engineering projects. Many local organizations, including our own Westmont Public Library, College of DuPage, and now DuPage Forest Preserve, have their own stations as part of this program. As a new addition, we have a table about STEM careers this year to appeal to older students and prepare them for the future. We'd like to thank the organizers who make this event possible. Mr. Ritz, Mr. Batista, Ms. Schillinger, Mr. Chamberlain, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Johnston, Ms. Japinski, and Ms. Deck. We'd also like to thank Mr. Balderman and Mr. Weck for always supporting and continuing to support Westmont High School students like us with these great events and activities. In the previous years, we've had inspiring keynote speakers, Molly Johnson, a Westmont High School alum, NASA intern, and MIT graduate student, and Pranav Viswanath, another Westmont High School alum and Georgia Tech student, which coincidentally is our brother and founder.
This year's keynote speaker is Rafael Rosa, who is Ms. Schillinger's brother and the executive director of the Lincoln Park Conservancy. STEM Night 2025 will be on March 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., so please save the date and we can't wait to see you there. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that STEM trivia, is this some Big Bang Theory trivia in there? You know, you've got to add some Big Bang Theory in there for some of that trivia.
Rich?
Is there somewhere on the 201 website that you ascertain the cost of financing, the $68.8 million bond issue that would initiate, that's what the referendum is about? You know, the cost of interest, the cost of finance?
So.
Is it somewhere on the website?
During public comment, we're not allowed to respond because it's not something that is on the agenda as of tonight. So unfortunately, we're held to that piece during public comment. So I'd recommend that you email Mr. Balderman and he can send you a link or a specific location.
All right. And Jack, is your email on the website somewhere?
Yeah. It's jbalderman@cusd201.org. If you don't remember that, you can find the website or give us a call and we'll get you the link.
Apologies. Sorry. Okay, into our consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations, Dana Hayek, long-term sub, second grade, Richard Bab, Westmont High School volunteer track, and leave of absence, approval of February 2025 expenditure report, and ratification of the January 2025 regular payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Stecady?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Abia?
Yes.
Motion. Okay. Into information and discussion, the ISB proposal for the CSBO search. So you want to take us through this real quick, Jack?
Everyone has the copy of that proposal. It is to aid to find as many and recruit as many people as possible for our CSBO position. We're contract with the Illinois Association of School Boards. Pretty standard practice. Their fee would be $6,700. They would help recruit throughout the state and actually outside of the state to get the best candidate pool possible for the CSBO position.
And they do the recruiting, they also will narrow it down, so.
They can present a slate of candidates as part of it. Yes.
So just kind of as a reminder, we utilized ISB for our superintendent search in the past and we utilized some of their extra pieces of this search for the community engagement part. We had 60 candidates, I believe, with the superintendent search, somewhere along those lines, and ISB did all of the screening and making sure that, and all of those checks, making sure they've got all of the required licensure, all of those pieces prior to any of those applicants coming to us, and then presented us with a slate of seven candidates, I think.
Very high-quality candidates.
Very high-quality candidates that we knew were going to.
Made our decision hard.
Yeah, it did make our decision very challenging. So the cost of that, I think, was about $13,000 because of the additional pieces that we had added to it. Those community meetings, we had a bunch of.
We had the brochure, belts, and printed.
Brochure was built out, yeah.
And they did the interviewing pre, yeah.
So this is a little bit different than that because we wouldn't be doing the community stuff, but they would kind of help us build out a CSBO.
Profile and advertisements.
Something to think about.
Questions?
No questions.
So this is not over $25,000, so this is not something that we need to approve? It will not be a board, it's not, it will never be an action item? So all that, you know, we're kind of discussing here is what direction we'd like the administration to take in this instance.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, we need to do this quickly and I think that working through ISB is probably the quickest single route we can have. So I would be fine with it.
Yeah, no issues, you know? If they bring forth high-quality candidates, it could save money in the long run, actually.
Absolutely. And what did you say, Jack? There's 14 open CSBO positions?
Yeah. Shannon did research, so she can speak to that.
Yes, the 14 open, like those type positions, like Assistant Superintendent of Finance in this area, and that was just on one, like, listing that I found just going through. And that 14 includes us. I'm sure there's other places jobs are posted. I didn't look at those. I just looked at this one and that's for that level of, like, degrees and stuff, yeah. There's 14 open right now.
Yeah, that is a.
That's a lot.
A lot of competition. Ange Whitney, thoughts?
I have no problem if we have to move forward with this. I mean, ISB hasn't done us wrong before and this is why we're a membership with them, to use them for their knowledge and their expertise. So I'm okay with it.
To essentially go with what everybody else said, I think it's more so time, you know, that I think is definitely of the essence. You know, that just alone, you know, in finding a qualified candidate, you know, can be something, you know, that could be detrimental, you know, if not done correctly. So, you know, if it presents itself, you know, that there aren't candidates, you know, that those qualifications prior to us taking that step, you know, then I'm okay with us making that investment because it's definitely a sound investment that's going to produce a quality candidate.
Yep, I think I'm in agreement. It's money well spent. Let's give our current posting a couple of days, see if we get any significant uptick in our current posting and, and Jack, you can send us a connect and some update on that, but $6,700 for them to uncover all the rocks. I mean, I was nothing, they did a phenomenal job with the superintendent search and the support that it gave the district in tools that we have to use, you know, for years to come was especially money very well spent, so. Does that give you what you need for us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, can we add that proposal into the board docs?
The proposal from Al.
Yeah, I believe we posted all of it publicly last time on the board docs. Okay, discussion number two, referendum informational mailing, so.
There's a cost to letting people know about the referendum and we really haven't done any, we haven't spent any money to advertise or to let our public know about this. So we have our own website that we created with detailed information about the expenditures and frequently asked questions and the tax calculator and a bunch of other items, but not everybody goes to our website, not everybody's on the Internet. So this would be a one-time, I think frankly, the first and the last mailing informational piece to let our public know that we're going to referendum. If there's any community member who doesn't go to our website, they would not know that we are going to referendum, if you will. We haven't notified. So this is a one-time mailing. There's different components to it. I think you've seen the proposal. The maximum would be the $9,700 for all parts of that and that would give a mailer the cost of the creation of the mailer and the cost of sending it out, the postage and everything to all citizens' households in our community. I do not anticipate another mailer going out or any other expenditures, if you will, of the district's funds for notification about the referendum. This is a one-time thing and frankly, I would never say never, but I anticipate this to be the last and only expenditure to let the public know. We have an obligation to let them know that we're going to referendum, so I highly encourage that we send this out to the entire community.
And the cost?
Total cost, $9,700. It could be reduced slightly by about $2,000, but I'd like the authorization if we need to do the full mailing and everything at that. It's the cost.
Is it every house in?
It's supposed to be every house in our.
In 201?
In 201 would get the information that says that April 1st, the referendum will be on the ballot.
So I remember in past conversations about mailers that we have, because of the shape of our district and the way mailers work, we have to mail.
Send.
We oversend is what ends up happening because there's no way not to.
Well, the way not to is so fiscally irresponsible.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it would be more expensive.
Significantly.
Be more expensive. So that's right, right? That's still holds, that's still a reality. We have to send the zip codes and so if we want to hit every household that is a tax-paying household in the district, we have to send to a certain number of zip codes and there's no way, there's not really any way around that other than to spend even more money and send to the right households or to the exact number of households, but it would cost more money in the end anyway. So, I mean, to me, Jack, you don't really need our authorization here. I mean, this is not something that falls either under the $25,000, but I think, when I think about, when I think about the balancing act between, you know, on the one hand, we'll hear that we spend too much money on this referendum, and on the other hand, we'll hear that we're not forthcoming with information about the referendum. If you ask me which side I would rather be erring on or be accused of, I would rather us be accused of being overly communicative and spending money to make sure that the community knows that this referendum is on the ballot, that we've done our part. I would rather be accused of spending too much money than of not being transparent about this. So that's my take.
I couldn't have said it better. I totally agree. I'd rather be more, you know, get more information out than not.
Especially for those that, as it has been said in previous board meetings, that some, for whatever the reason is, that they haven't been made aware, you know, of the referendum. And it may be just because of that, like what was spoken upon, you know, that we do have, you know, out of our community, those that may not be computer savvy, you know, familiar with the Internet, you know, navigating it to obtain the information they need. So there's a disconnect with the communication in regards to that and whether we want to or not, everybody checks mail, whether we like it, whether we have bills or, you know, a nice set of coupons from maybe the grocery store. So I think, you know, essentially that investment being made, you know, definitely increases, you know, our communication. To, as Carlos' point, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, it just can't be said that we did not, you know, communicate that, you know, if nothing else. So I'm in agreement, you know, with that investment being made.
Exactly. I follow up right there, like, let them know, because there's some people that don't care what the local government is doing as long as, until they hear, oh, your taxes are going up. Oh, wait, what? Like, they don't dig into the school, they don't look into that if they don't have kids here. So, yeah, let every household know.
Yeah. So it does call out here messaging, community education, and the actual printing and.
Postage, everything.
Postage cost, which essentially is 4,850, messaging is 2,500. What is community education? Messaging seems rather clear. They need to develop the right, they need to update and develop the message, but.
So that's part of their delivery of and creation of the materials and any kind of other advising in the last six weeks before the referendum, or I guess it's five weeks now. Anything else that they would, if they got any feedback from the mailers or if there was anything else that the Board wanted to be consulted about for that? So we don't have to expend that piece. But I don't know how we cannot send out one mailer.
Right.
Well, that's what I was referring to. I mean, in terms of, in terms of all the other pieces, if we can, if we can save those, let's save them. Honestly, let's not do them.
Yeah, we're five weeks out to that point, right? Yes, we should absolutely send out a mailer, 100%. I don't know that we need this.
The education piece.
Community education, additional cost.
Right.
So.
That's not something we have to do. But as I said, I think you have to send out one piece of information for people who do not go to our website. And it goes to every home, so then at least everybody in the community will know that this is happening.
Okay, so again, this is under the $25,000 mark, so we don't have an action item connected to this. We're not approving up to a certain spend or anything like that. We're just giving the administration direction. Can we get this in board docs also?
Well, this is, that's from the Board. That's their statement on the proposal.
Yes, we've posted there.
After the fact. But I thought it was after.
Yeah.
The one thing we can do is amend the proposal if the Board doesn't want, we could reduce it from 97 to 74, if that's the Board's direction.
Yeah, if that cuts out the pieces we don't need.
I would say absolutely, yes.
Okay, so then it'll be 7,400. We'll have to amend that. I'll talk to them about that.
Okay.
But that's the bare minimum to get the mailer every, from A to Z, to have the mailer in everybody's house.
Perfect.
And as I said, I want to be clear, there is no other, I don't think there'll be any other expenditures as we go forward in the next five weeks related to the referendum in the district.
Okay.
All right.
Cool, moving along. We don't have any action items tonight, so into the superintendent's report.
Well, once again, very proud of our students and our team throughout the district doing amazing work in a most positive way. I just marvel at the commitment of our teaching staff and of our students, all their hard work. It's coming into testing season and I know we're well-prepared for that and that is how we get a measure of our students' performance. It's not the only measure, but it's an important measure. So we're excited, the students and teachers that work very hard. Attendance in schools is outstanding, some of the best chronic absenteeism rates in the state, and everybody's been working very hard. Our early indicators, as you heard from the quality review. Our early indicators, as you heard from the quality review meeting, was around past, on track to be at the same level of performance that we were last year, which I challenge anybody to show me a district and a state that academically is performing better than we did last year, that's just incredible, and the early indicators that we're on pace for the same kind of performance, just outstanding. I'm so proud of the team, and kids are showing up to school, even though we had a lot of sickness in the community and the everywhere, people persevered, and we saw a little dip there, but still attendance has been fantastic, and our teachers are working so hard to continuously improve instruction and curriculum, and very proud of that. On the extracurricular side, a lot of things, I'm very excited about STEM Night coming up. Our students also, from the Kapow Club, did an amazing job, and we talked about that, the state superintendent was there, Maria was there helping and supporting, really a true leadership from our students, very proud of that. Some great assemblies for Black History Month, really a lot of pride there in performance and information, something to be very proud of. From an athletics standpoint, our cheerleaders, our junior high cheerleaders almost got wiped out by the horrible weather, but they went downstate and they performed, and I think they were in the top 11 in the state, is that...
14 out of 21, but they had zero deductions.
Yeah, so we're proud of that. We, cheerleading squad worked so hard on their preparation, and they went downstate and did a great job. Our wrestlers at the high school, we'll have them here at one of our board meetings, but went downstate, Christian Rosa and Sean Patterson went downstate to champagne, that was great. Our junior high wrestling team won the regionals, and they're going to sectionals this upcoming Saturday, I believe it's in Deerfield. Last Friday was very much fun, the girls' basketball team won the regional championship, that was fantastic, the girls played great. Our boys' basketball team last night won their last game of the, on the home court, and beat our archrival Lyle for the last game on that court for the seniors. So overall, the winter sports season, there were a lot of accolades, a lot of positivity there. So I'm excited. We will announce this widely to everybody on March 5th, 12th, and 19th. We'll be working with the architects to do some early schematic drawings at South School from 6:00 to 8:00, but we'll publicize that. So I'm very excited about the progress of this district and what people are accomplishing, and it's through a lot of hard work and dedication. And the other thing I keep coming back to is the culture in our buildings, we're always improving, we can always grow, but you're hard-pressed to find better citizenship than what we have in 201, so it's awesome. Thank you to our parents and community for all your support.
Board reports?
I just, I have just one thing I wanted to say, it's about the junior high wrestling team. I, I want to give a shout-out to the coaches of that team, because what they've built, Mike Hatchell, Dave Wiesbruck, and Coach Vidito, what they've done there, they've taken what was about, I don't know, two years ago, maybe they had six kids, I think, wrestling, and I don't know the exact number, so if I got that wrong, I'm not sure, but the Westmont Junior High School team didn't just dominate that, that, they, they classified kids for the next stage in, in like, 11 out of 15 weight classes, so much so that I happened to be in the crowd there, because my son, who did not qualify for the next stage, but was a part of the team, there was a couple behind me from a different school, that towards the end of the, of the day of the tournament, they had no idea I was with Westmont, by the way, tapped me on the shoulder and said, "Do you know what's going on in Westmont, White? How did this happen?" And I'll tell you how it happened, it happened because of those coaches, and what they, and what they've achieved there, so I just, I wanted, I wanted to give them a special shout-out, because it's pretty amazing, the culture they've created on that team.
I want to talk about outdoor education, I want to thank...
Yes.
The sixth-grade team that took the kids to Oregon, Illinois, White Pines Ranch, Dr. Burisak, Ms. Walsh, Ms. Hillards, Mr. Troyer, Ms. Lopez, students I talked to had a wonderful time, really enjoyed it, so thank you very much. And then for me, the second thing, I am looking forward to Westmont High School, the play, You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, I love going to the place, there, there's, we have such talented students performing in these plays. So it's Friday, the 28th of February at 7:00 p.m., March 1st at 7:00 p.m., March 2nd at 2:00 p.m., very family-friendly show coming up, so come on out, see our talented students perform, it's, it's a really good time.
Yeah, outdoor education was so much fun, I actually, I actually heard about it, amazing.
I'm glad they were able to find another place.
A sixth grader telling me about the day.
Go, so yeah. Now we just gotta wait, the junior high is going back to DC come April. We got about 40, 50 kids out of the eighth-grade class that are going to DC, so...
Okay, any other board reports? Open it back up to public comment? Okay, okay, moving along to future meetings and events, so as mentioned, the Spring Musical, You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, February 28th, 7:00 p.m., March 1st, 7:00 p.m., March 2nd, 2:00 p.m. at Westmont High School. STEM Night, March 12th, at 6:00 p.m. at Westmont High School. Our next meeting of the Board of Education is March 18th, 6:30 p.m. here at Village Hall. We've got Pizza Wars coming up March 19th at 5:30 p.m. at Westmont Junior High School. Our Rising Stars Talent Show is March 21st at 6:00 p.m. at Westmont High School. Remind me, Rising Stars is the elementary or the junior high?
Junior high, junior high.
Okay.
Is it wait, no, no, that's the elementary.
It is the elementary.
It's elementary, the junior highs is in April, sorry.
The District 201 Fine Arts Festival on March 26th at 7:00 p.m. at Westmont High School, and parent teacher conferences, March 27th and 28th. Be on the lookout on your calendar for more information about that and information from your administrators, and as you already mentioned, we've got our pre-referendum planning meetings coming up here, they've just been finalized, which is why they didn't make it onto the future meetings and events, but they're gonna get onto the district calendar, and we'll get some, we'll get more information out on those, but that is March 5th, March 12th, and March 19th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., open to the public.
And that's, that's talking about the architecture of the school.
The menu, so not so much the architecture of the school, but what is what...
It's gonna look like.
We need in the school, so the first meeting, the outcome of that will be multiple conceptual, conceptual building plans created, potential. The second one will be focused on building a consensus towards one preferred conceptual building plan, so like the menu of what are the rooms, what are the spaces in that building, and then the, the last meeting's outcome, the goal is one consensus kind of conceptual building plan that's established. So again, it's not, this is not necessarily...
Designing a building.
It's not, it's designing what spaces we would need in the building, and what could potentially go on the location, provided the referendum passes, and all things go to plan.
And once again, thank you to Leggett for taking the risk on that.
That is donating their time.
Donating their time.
Yep, they're donating their time to, so that we can...
Stay.
All goes, goes to plan, can have a 2027, stay on our 2027 timeline, opening timeline, instead of pushing back here, so. Okay, we will not have closed session, no current information, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the February 25th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?